Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will you have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
And Mayor Terry.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Sanders will be absent this evening.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item two. Would you, with a clerk, excuse me, please read the TV announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is being videotaped with closed captioning in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be repeated Wednesday, June 21st at 6:00 PM, and Friday, June 23rd at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. So move on to item three. And first, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our soon-to-be newest City Councilmember, Garrett Gatewood. And then I'll invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation and announcement that, oh, I'm sorry, the invocation by Mark Shetler from River City Christian Church to do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. And no matter what your political persuasion or your religious affiliation is, I think we can all say, "Thank God we have air conditioning." All right? Would you bow in prayer for me, please? With me, please. God, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this evening and this time to come together as members of this community. And Lord, we know that there are a lot of divisions in our world. There's a lot of division in our country. But God, we want Rancho Cordova to be an example of what it means for a community that is diverse to come together, to work together for the good of all of its citizens. So, Lord, we pray that you would guide the council. Lord, that you would give them your wisdom and your direction. Lord, that those who would be speaking tonight from the community, that, Lord, you would also give them your direction as well. God, we pray that you would bring us together, help us to be the people that you have created us to be, help us to care for those that are less fortunate than we are. And we ask that you would continually remind us how blessed we are to live in America, how blessed we are to be a part of Rancho Cordova. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Okay. And with that, we'll move on to the fun stuff. Item 5.1, the swearing-in of our newest councilmember, Garrett Gatewood. Okay. I should raise your right hand, please? I need them. I'm forgetting stuff. Okay. Repeat after me. I, Garrett Gatewood.
I, Garrett Gatewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wait until we, picture?
I sure do. I sure do.
We're gonna need that. Stay right there. We'll take some more.
Come on, baby. Come on.
You did something like this to the family? Yeah. Have a drink. Here, bud. Thank you for letting me be in the council.
Oh.
That's right. Start the apologies now. Okay. And so, so with that, we'll take a five-minute recess. And get back to work. Evidently, there are refreshments in the lobby. All right. We all here?
We're here.
Okay. We'll call this meeting back to order. If you'd like to continue your conversations, feel free in the hallway. And with that, we'll move back to presentations. And we have 6.1, Presentation Regarding Law Enforcement Chaplaincy by Mindy Russell, Senior Chaplain and Executive Director, and Presentation of Proclamation Honoring Their Forty Years of Service.
So, thank you very much for allowing me to come and talk to you all today. This is the first time, actually, that the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy has ever made a formal presentation. So I wanted to just let you know.
So, Mindy.
Yes?
Let's start it off right by giving you an award first.
Oh, great. I thought I had to work a little bit for it first.
No, it's all right. You don't have to work for it. So, so turn around.
Turn around.
Some way. Okay. So, we just, there are so many ways in which people in Rancho Cordova, both individuals as well as organizations, have benefited from the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy. And the first time that we, as this organization, met you all was when our councilmember, Dave Roberts, passed away. I don't think any of us actually knew that such a thing existed. But you have been incredibly valuable to Rancho Cordova ever since then. So we wanted to start, we want to hear what you have to say, but we want to start it off with a proclamation and recognition of your 40th anniversary as an organization. So whereas the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento is a charitable organization committed to serving law enforcement personnel and their families, victims of crime and tragedies, and the community at large, and whereas the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento is the only service of its kind that provides rapid-response teams alongside law enforcement agencies with on-scene emotional crisis support, they do it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 365 days per year. And whereas the chaplaincy serves 19 different law enforcement agencies, 16 local school districts, state and county government agencies, customer-based retail business, and various churches throughout the region, and whereas the chaplains attend a 150-hour Chaplain Academy accredited through the Los Rios Community College, they, they take peace officer standards and training, and they're certified in post-trauma and crisis response, and are trained in the areas of crime scene integrity, psychological first aid, school crisis intervention, mass casualty evacuation scene support, search and rescue field operations, town hall meeting strategies, and family assistance centers management. And whereas the chaplaincy has been named the model chaplaincy in the nation, goodness, because of the exceptional organizational structure, its extensive training requirements, and its rapid-response capabilities. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does congratulate the Law Enforcement Chaplaincy of Sacramento on the occasion of their 40th anniversary. And we're very pleased to have you here tonight to talk with us.
Thank you so much. Beautiful. Thank you. Well, I'm gonna just quickly just reiterate a little bit of things. I think knowing that this organization has been around for 40 years has a lot to say for what we've done. But we do not rest on our past laurels, even though, I must say, that a lot of people did not know that all the things that we have been responsible for and to serving the people, not only locally but nationwide. So we're talking about in 1996, the Unabomber, which was a nationwide tragedy. We were there, this is just run in itself. You know that, right? It's just run in itself. We were there for the family, for the governor of the State of California, as well as everybody else that was affected by the Unabomber, the good guys, the, the work in the floods that happened twice. We had, within four years, 100-year floods. So we're really actually being able to help people at the worst times of their lives. I think the biggest thing in my training as a trauma responder was going to ground zero for the first 16 days. And that's actually how we got noted as the model chaplaincy, because we were able to work with the Family Assistance Center for over 5,000 victims, 1,200 homicide investigators, and 500 chaplains that responded to all the people in New York City. So who are we? What are we? And where are we? It's important for Rancho Cordova to know that we are always around. Our vision is literally to bring hope to first responders in the community. And how we do that is be on scene to care for people in the time that they're trying to process this impact of trauma and grief. And we want to break the cycles of brokenness in our community. We're constitutional chaplains, and that means that we're not representing a faith, nor is it representing a church. We are representing that we are religiously neutral, and we serve everybody of all faiths or no faith. And so it just kind of tells you how many certified trauma care chaplains we have. Lastly, you see the different color of the uniforms, and that is because one specifically serves law enforcement families and the other one serves our community. We are 100% trained to be able to help people in any of these areas, visits, weddings, baby dedications, funerals, or post-trauma stress counseling. And all those things that you see about, and all the things you hear about in the news, we are there to help the families 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon. We make all the death notifications for our coroner's division, and we actually think that's a privilege. And I know that that makes people wonder why we would think that, but I don't want anybody to come home and answer their phone to hear a message like, "Call the coroner tomorrow for a recent loss of a loved one." We think it's more dignity to knock on someone's door and stay with them until they can actually process that life-changing message. The other thing that we do is that we serve the nation as well because of the fact that we're trained in so many different areas with the Family Assistance Center. Homeland Security has called us to go to other disasters, so Hurricane Katrina, Oklahoma City bombing, Sandy Hook, all of the things you've heard about, we have been there. So how do we do it? We're available 40, for over 40 years, 24 hours, seven days a week, 365. We have one number that anybody has to call us. So dispatch doesn't have to worry about what chaplain's on, what day of the week it is. One number deploys chaplains. They're post-certified, they're 150-hour training, and our training is vetted through the United States Department of Justice because of John Ashcroft actually paying us to create a curriculum back in 2002. Confidential, I think that's what chaplain stands for. Because we're not religious in manner, our services at the level where we serve, we're not religious. We're actually helping first aid, emotional and psychological. Last year, we served over 4,081 calls. That's a lot of callouts. And with that, we were on call for 70,000 hours, that we had people on either the early or the late shift. So we were able to respond to all those. And if you think about what they, give the value of a volunteer hour is $27.59, that said that we gave back to our communities $1,933 of worth of crisis intervention services. We do what no one else does in this community. So our future, we've talked about history, we've talked about the present, and we're talking about the excellence of the future. We are providing more and more education within our schools. We are trying very hard to stop this pan-pandemic of suicide in our teenagers from 15 to 24. You don't hear about it, but just this weekend, we went to three suicides under the age of 20. And nobody even hears about it. So we provide education a lot, and we help and continue to train to help people in schools, churches, businesses, and community. With that, you have answered the questions with this beautiful proclamation. I thank you all for letting me talk. Is there any questions you might have?
Any questions from council? Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me report.
We just want to thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you very much.
So with that, we'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk, right over there. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the time on the agenda when the items will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment cards?
I have no public comment cards.
Okay. So with that, that's a far cry from our last meeting. So with that, we'll move on to council reports. And to be fair, maybe, Bob, we could start with you, and Garrett can scribble down some stuff that he might want to say, and then we'll go first, and then you can go last this time. So that's okay.
I'm making it kind of easy, isn't it?
It's a little tough sitting on the hot seat over there, so.
Man, okay. I have a couple of things with the mosquito vector control board. They've tested 104 dead birds, and you can still call them and let them know when you find anything that's around, the birds around there. And 10 of them tested positive for West Nile virus. So it's something you don't want to mess around with. The West Nile virus does affect people in a very horrible way sometimes. I've seen a gentleman who was walking with a cane and another who had a, was barely able to walk. He was in a wheelchair more than anything else because of the West Nile virus. If they hit an animal, like a horse, that kills the horse. For a while, we were almost wiped out with the magpies, because magpies and crows have no antibodies. So if they get bit by the West Nile virus, then they're dead. So it's not something that's then, you have to mess around with. So when you're out in the evening, but when sun's going down or when the sun's going up in the morning, it's, even though it's hot, if you can protect yourself, some long-sleeved clothes, or the spray with the anti-mosquito sprays you can find around all over places. We have free wipe cloths here in City Hall that are provided by the mosquito vector control board. And protect yourself. It's really not anything to mess around with, like I said. One more thing that they have that's new, they have remote aircraft and drones. They're testing those right now, to use drones to spray some of the areas, especially in the rice areas, where they can't really get out there on the vehicles, but the drones can get out there. They have cameras, they have about five pounds, the newest ones, about five pounds of spray that can go after the adult mosquitoes with that. So it's a new thing that's going on. They've been testing for a year or two, but they're getting a little bit better with it. So we're looking forward to that. The other thing I have right now is congratulations and welcome to the city council.
Okay. So, yes, welcome, Garrett. Regional Transit and the Metro Chamber partnered together and restructured the annual luncheon to talk about the state of regional transit, and they now call it Transit Means Business. And they brought in a speaker from Virginia who, he has an organization called the Southeastern Institute of Research, and he talked about people, companies and corporations moving around the United States and why they move. And it turns out that one of the key things they're looking for is a region that has really good public transportation. So of course, everybody in the room was very pleased to hear that. It truly highlights the need for making regional transit and all of the rest of the regional transit agencies as good as they can be, and then highlights the need for the connect card. At the regional transit meeting last week, one of the things that comes under the heading of consequences to be determined, the, the board voted unanimously, and I will admit I was a part of that, to divert some $25 million in Proposition 1A money from other things that regional transit could spend it on and put it into that streetcar that's going to connect downtown Sacramento and west Sacramento. And it, it wasn't an easy decision for me. Rancho Cordova has put an awful lot of our own money and our own people's time into trying to upgrade certainly the light rail system and to, to bring back some buses to Rancho Cordova. So like I said, I'm not sure how that's going to turn out. But on the positive note, one of the proposals that was, that they came up with a couple of years ago was to try to make the buses and the light rail cars look better. And we have two Rancho Cordova artists who have been selected to help paint light rail vehicles. And you know both of their work. Lynda Nunes is one of them, and Donine Wellman is the other one. And so we're going to see their, their work on light rail vehicles soon. We had our two-by-two with the county last week. Donald and I were there. And from my perspective, the two really important things we talked about were the ways in which the VA campus is expanding and what that means to all of the facilities around the campus, including the Mather Community Campus and the Mather Veterans Village. And then we also talked about the changing, the evolving strategy of Sacramento County and how to deal with the homeless population, and again, its effect on Mather Community Campus and the Mather Veterans Village. Saturday, I hope everybody had as good a time as I did at the Hacker Lab Great Make Day. This was an absolute hoot. They had the most interesting machines out here and light displays, and people doing all sorts of creating things, from as simple as sewing different things to, to a guy, a young man who had invented his own 3D printer, and he was demonstrating it and helping people make things on the 3D printer. Sunday, a week ago, we went to the last of an event in Elk Grove called Spotlight on the Ranch, and it was held at the Historic Mosher Ranch. But what's probably a good lesson for us in this event, it's the seventh year that they have raised money for scholarships by having a big event. And they've been raising many, multiple thousands of dollars. But this is the last year they were going to do it at the ranch. So I did go to see the historic property. Next year, they're going to try to do a farm-to-fort thing in Old Town Elk Grove, and I guess it's the, it's the end thing. They want to copy the farm-to-fort dinner on the Tower Bridge downtown in Sacramento. So we'll see how that goes. And then finally, last week, I had another really super event, and I know you guys think this is totally funny, but I went to a robotics class at Riverview STEM Academy. They're having, one of the things that we are funding with the Community Enhancement Fund is this robotics class for 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders at Riverview. And this is one of our wonderful programs that's empowered because of the sales tax dollars that all of our residents in Rancho Cordova have voted for. And I truly had the best time. I have two grandkids and now a third who are doing robotics at their schools, but I'd never seen it in operation. And the way in which they are teaching these kids coding and the, the way in which they program their robots, and for the little kids at Riverview, kindergarten, first and second grades, they do a robotics program that's based on Lego somehow. But the one for the older kids is called VEX, and I suspect your grandkids may have gone through this too. And, and it's a competition. So they had this, they have this on a table. They have a big mat, and it has a big white ring in it, and they call it Sumo. And the idea is for your robot to knock the other robot out of the ring. But Good Day Sacramento was there to, to cover it, and, and I had a terrific time watching these kids, and they had a great time. And the gentleman who came from Good Day Sacramento, Cody Stark, is the one with the bow tie that I went and did, to do yoga with.
Yeah, that's who I was working out with the cops with, yeah. I was supposed to be there, too.
Okay. So Cody and I had a really good time talking, talking with these kids about the robotics at Riverview STEM, so.
Cody's covered a lot of stuff for us.
Yeah, he has. He really has.
We, we owe him some flowers. So a couple of things that, because we kept our, our reports brief last time, but a couple of other things, yeah, I think we talked a little bit more about the, the county's budget as well and some of their priorities and their kind of twist on homeless services and some other things that they're trying to do, but it's interesting. I know there was some controversy about their budget around parks funding and some other things that might end up affecting the city, but I think that was a productive meeting. David and I had a two-by, had the final two-by-two with Debbie Betancourt for Falls, Cordova. The new superintendent, I think, is starting mid-July. Does that sound right?
July.
Yeah. So we'll try to get a date together for next year, but it was productive and kind of did a rundown and kind of debrief on what got funded for Measure H and what didn't, and what things we disagreed with the committees and stuff on. And the one thing, I can't remember if I, if I said this, but the, the Air District, for those of you who know that I'm the chair of the Air District, so we did announce our new executive director, or Air Pollution Control Officer to replace Larry. So it's Dr. Alberto Ayala, who was the, most recently, the Deputy Executive Director of the California Air Resources Board. And his, well, he's worked there for a long time, but, but one of the major things that he did late in his career there was, he was the one who pretty much discovered the VW scandal and the pollution scandal that kind of rocked the world for their, that company. And then also handled negotiating the settlement with California. So he joins, I want to say the mid-July as well. And then, just to give everyone's a heads up, I actually don't have the date in front of me, but in July, we are going to be having a rendering plant meeting in Anatolia to talk about their toxic studies and that, so they're, they're going to release the study on whether or not what's coming out of the rendering plant is toxic. And then they're also going to update on the implications of the Right to Farm Act and the production numbers that they have for the rendering plant. So that'll be a very interesting night, especially for a brand-new executive director. But luckily, Larry's going to stick around for about a month, so he'll be at that as well.
So I, so probably what you're saying is that it's the Air Quality District who's done the study?
The Air Quality District did a study that they, so we had, we had a meeting in the fall, if you recall, where they basically explained a technique in studying point-of-source toxic studies to see if, when you're in the park or you're in your house, if there is anything dangerous that you're, that you're inhaling. So they're going to be announcing that. We owe him some flowers. So, a couple of things that, because we kept our, our reports brief last time, but a couple of other things, yeah, I think we talked a little bit more about the county's budget as well and some of their priorities and their kind of twist on homeless services and some other things that they're trying to do. But it's interesting. I know there was some controversy about their budget around parks funding and some other things that might end up affecting the city. But I think that was a productive meeting. David and I had a two by, had the final two by two with Debbie Betancourt for Folskordova. The new superintendent, I think, is starting mid-July. Does that sound right?
July.
Yeah. So we'll try to get a date together for next year. But it was productive and kind of did a rundown and kind of debrief on what got funded for Measure H and what didn't, and what things we disagreed with the committees and stuff on. And the one thing, I can't remember if I, if I said this, but the air district, for those of you who know that I'm the chair of the air district, so we did announce our new executive director, or Air Pollution Control Officer to replace Larry. So it's Dr. Alberto Ayala, who was the, most recently, the deputy executive director of the California Air Resources Board. And his, well, he's worked there for a long time, but, but one of the major things that he did late in his career there was, he was the one who pretty much discovered the VW scandal and the pollution scandal that kind of rocked the world for their, that company. And then also handled negotiating the settlement with California. So he joins, I want to say, the mid-July as well. And then, just to give everyone's a heads up, I actually don't have the date in front of me, but in July, we are going to be having a rendering plant meeting in Anatolia to talk about their toxic studies and that, so they're, they're going to release the study on whether or not what's coming out of the rendering plant is toxic. And then they're also going to update on the implications of the Right to Farm Act and the production numbers that they have for the rendering plant. So that'll be a very interesting night, especially for a brand-new executive director. But luckily, Larry's going to stick around for about a month. So he'll be at that as well.
So I, so probably what you're saying is that it's the air quality district who's done the study?
The air quality district did a study that they, so we had, we had a meeting in the fall, if you recall, where they basically explained a technique in studying point-of-source toxic studies to see if, when you're in the park or you're in your house, if there is anything dangerous that you're, that you're inhaling. So they're going to be announcing that. But then also, a lot of the residents, there's a provision of the Right to Farm Act that says if a plant like that significantly increases its production, it could be subject to additional regulation beyond the Right to Farm Act, and could be, and could be exempting itself from the grandfathering in of the Right to Farm Act. So that'll all be discussed at the meeting. I'll get you the date. I want to say it's, it's late July is what I remember for some reason. So there's that. I think the only other thing I wanted to highlight was, I spoke at a luncheon a couple weeks ago for the Los Rios Promise Program that they're trying to launch region-wide, or I guess county-wide plus Yolo County. And so I, along with the chancellor, spoke about our program and highlighted the, the great successes that we were having. So it was actually myself, Marty Tuttle from West Sac, because Mayor Cobaldin was in some foreign country doing something, and spoke to potential donors and regional stakeholders, including the county and some other folks. But I, I'll just throw this out, because I thought it was just a fascinating number. In case anyone wants to know how much it would cost to replicate a promise program that would, ours is a little bit more expensive, because if they get the Board of Governors waiver, we still give them a scholarship. But the way they're actually trying to structure it for the whole region would be, for the students that don't get a Board of Governors waiver, they would get free, free tuition for the first year if they go full-time, right? That costs $1.3 million for the entire county to have every student covered.
That's nuts.
Yeah. So, just to throw that out there, that our $150,000, ours is a more generous program than like West Sacramento's would be. But what they're actually proposing is for the students that don't get a Board of Governors waiver, that's who they would fund. That would cost $1.3 million to cover every graduating high school senior in the county.
Why do they need a Board of Governors waiver?
Well, so 60% of students that attend community college qualify for Board of Governors waiver. So if they're low-income, then they don't have to pay tuition.
Oh, I see.
So 60% of students just get it. So literally $1.3 million in this county would mean tuition-free first year, every student that lives in Sacramento County.
So at least touching potentially 40% of all of our graduating seniors.
Yep. Would cost $1.3 million.
Was that that $25 million, the governor waiver thing that he came out with? It was $25 million the governor did, but something. I thought that's what it was.
Are you talking about the UC reform money? That they had to adopt certain reforms in order to get the funding?
Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah, that was UC. I thought that was 50 million. But yeah, no, this, I, I was amazed, because we, you know, we were at this luncheon to talk about raising significant funds to support the community college. And then he threw out the number, and I'm like, well, we should be able to do that by the end of lunch. But unfortunately, the, the county supervisor that was there needed to go. But at some point, hopefully, we'll be able to talk more about it and show them the great successes that we're having here and what kind of results that would do for the rest of our region. So I was really excited. It's, I'll tell you, we, we're, the recognition that we're getting for that program in the region is really amazing. So with that, Mr. Gatewood?
I just want to thank, thank the city council and the mayor for giving me this chance to be able to serve my city. And the only thing I really have, because I ran away for two weeks, it's nothing personal, it's stressful, our cooling center, which I don't think anyone realizes in the, in the city, and I just found out that we actually Uber people here. So I don't know of any other city that's actually going out of its way to bring its citizens if they come into trouble. So that's amazing. That's it.
Thank you. City manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. I will also be very brief. Just a couple of things that I wanted to point out. Mayor Terry and I had a meeting with Mayor Steinberg.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The city manager, did you?
No, 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 no. Go ahead, no.
Expand on it?
Nope.
So we had, we had a good meeting today, and the focus of discussion was finding ways that the two cities could partner together on more regional issues. So more to come. We hope to be meeting and with them on, on additional issues in the future. I also had an opportunity to have a meeting with the new, the relatively new executive director for Secog, James Corles. He and I had a good meeting, and also discussing ways that we could participate in more of the regional approach to many of the problems and issues that we face as a region. And the only other thing related to the promise program, I did attend a half-day, as a board member for the Folsom Lake College Foundation Board, I did attend a half-day retreat, a great deal of good discussion related to the promise program and how wonderful it's been really been replicated as a model for the rest of the region. So more to come on that, and we hope that we would be able to talk to others who are interested to expand the program beyond the city and take it to the other cities and jurisdictions in, in the county, and even beyond Sacramento County. That's all I have. Thank you.
I guess since I'm chairing, I can do this. I just wanted to mention one other thing that Lynda and I and Cyrus will be working on. The third regional mayor's luncheon will be held in Rancho Cordova. So the, the chairs of the regional mayors, whatever they're calling it now, which is the mayor of Sacramento, the mayor of West Sacramento, and the mayor of Roseville have asked us to host this, this next one, which is only the third one that we've ever had. So that'll be coming in later in the summer. So with that, we'll move on to consent calendar items. So consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Any items to be pulled?
Seeing none, I will move approval of items, consent calendar items 10.1 through 10.7.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 11 consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual considerations, all items will be approved by one motion. Before, well, first, is there anything to be pulled?
No, but we would acknowledge that there's a minor changes on 11.3 and 11.4.
Well, there's actually items 11.2, 11.3, and 11.4.
Yeah.
And these are at our dais in, in the back of the room?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay. So with that, noting these amendments, do I have a motion?
Do you want to open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
I have no speaker cards.
Counsel? Nope. Close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I will approve, uh, move approval.
We'll get there, I promise.
Items 11.1 through 11.6 with the minor modifications to 11.2, 11.3, and 11.4.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, then.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye. See, she goes out of order. Got to keep, keep an eye on that. Mess me up.
Yep. Okay. So with that, we're moving on to public hearing items. Item 12.1, Rio del Oro Parcel 67 Tentative Subdivision Map. And I'm going to stop reading there because it's really long. So I'll go ahead and ask staff for their presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. June Cowell, senior planner. So tonight is Rio del Oro Parcel 67 Tentative Subdivision Map. And this shows just where Rio del Oro, specific plan areas within the city. It's a 12,189 residential unit, mixed use development, and it's on 3,828 acre site. So I'm just going to go through the project request, history, project location, and then the project description. So the applicant is requesting a 444 single-family lot tentative subdivision map. And that includes one neighborhood park, four green belt lots, seven landscape corridor lots, and three paseo lots on 125.8 acres. So just to give you a little bit of the history, the specific plan was approved in two separate phases or tiers. So tier one, adoption of specific plan, the DA, and certification, the EIR. Tier two was amendments to specific plan, public facility financing plan, the large lot tentative subdivision map, phasing, housing, and approval of the EIR. So the next step is the development. So Parcel 67 is located in the northwest corner of Rio del Oro specific plan area. And the land use is for a single-family neighborhood park and green belt. To the north is White Rock Road with the Westboro specific plan. To the west is existing industrial. And to the south is future BP or business park within the Rio del Oro specific plan. And to the east is for medium density. So the existing conditions, there's non-native grass, elderberry shrubs, there's several dirt driveways, a few trees are in the northern area, and then several monitoring well sites. Proposed subdivision plan is 444 single-family lots. And as you can see, the neighborhood park is in the center of the subdivision, landscape corridors, and then the green belts, and three paseo lots. And those are connections to the green belts or to Rancho Cordova Parkway. So there's a summary in area of the single-family lots. Basically, there's three types of lot sizes, 47 feet by 110, 62 feet wide by 110, and then 75 feet wide by 110. So the range for the lot sizes are 5,170 square feet to 15,848 square feet. And the overall density is 4.66. So here's the summary of the non-residential lots, the park, the green belts, and landscape corridors, and major road. So the approved Rio del Oro specific plan and design guidelines function is to establish a framework for the Rio del Oro area. And the tentative subdivision map establishes the form or configuration for the proposed subdivision. So the layout is similar to a grid system. There's not very many cul-de-sacs. The neighborhood park is located centrally, and that's a walkable destination throughout the subdivision. And I can probably just go back quickly so you can see the subdivision map. Several paseo connections are provided within the subdivision. There's a 200-foot wide green belt, and that's located along the western property line in between the existing industrial, industrial uses. And then a 100-foot wide green belt is located along the southern property line. And the center section of both green belts include a single-loaded street. And several paseos are locate, located between single-family lots where the rear yards face the green belt. So this map shows the entry. The, the red circles show the traffic calming. Those are going to be ball belts. The blue arrow is the connection, so they'll have an entrance to White Rock Road and to Rancho Cordova Parkway. The blue, sort of dotted ones are future connection to International Drive. International Drive is not part of Parcel 67, so that will be built in the future. The dark green are connections to the green belt, and the light green shows the green belt. And the highlighted street along the green belt just shows you in yellow that there are some rear-facing, but it also in the center comes to a single-loaded. So that opens up to the green belt. Infrastructure improvements, so White Rock Road will be widened from the western property boundary to Rancho Cordova Parkway from two to four lanes, and that includes frontage improvements and a medium and landscaping amenities. Rancho Cordova Parkway will be constructed from White Rock Road to the southern Parcel 67 boundary as a two-lane roadway with frontage improvements and a medium. The onsite improvements include traffic signals on White Rock Road and Rancho Cordova Parkway and the internal roadway system. And that will be constructed in phases per the phasing plan. The improvement phasing includes the drainage Parkway and trail system on the western southern project boundaries, as well as the detention basin, which is located south of the project. So the overall plan for the bikeway and trail system, this is for Rio del Oro. And then the bikeway system for Parcel 67, there will be a class-three bikeway on, you can tell through the entrance, around the neighborhood park, and then connection to the western green belt and the southern green belt. And those streets will have a detached sidewalk. So the western green belt, that's 200 feet wide and is known as the west trail, will have a class-one bike pedestrian trail, and it's be 12 feet wide, paved, and two-foot wide shelters on each side. There'll be a sound wall along the western property line, so along the industrial properties, a 60-foot wide existing water and pipeline easement drainage canal or channel. And then the green belt southern portion, that will include the 20-foot wide smud easement, and that's for the 69 KV lines. And then, of course, it will include landscaping. So here's the cross-section. You can see to your far left is a sound wall where the existing industrial uses are located. And then the southern green belt, that's known as the north trail, includes a class-one trail, and that's 10 feet wide with a two-foot wide shoulder on each side, the drainage channel, and then landscaping. In the environmental review, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15183, it's consistent with the community plan and general plan and zoning. So no further environmental analysis. And the recommendation is that staff recommends approval of the resolution, finding the project to be in compliance with the CEQA Guidelines Section 15183, and approval of the Rio del Oro Parcel 67 Tentative Subdivision Map on 125.8 acres within the Rio del Oro specific plan. With that, if you had any questions, the applicant is here as well.
Does the applicant have a, does the applicant have a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Price Walker with, with LAH Homes. I just want to, I will be brief also because the staff report actually is really well-done, and I think it kind of went through all of the, the issues and summarized, I think, very well how the consistency of the project with the specific plan. But a little bit, a little bit of history, as you know, it's been a long time coming, and LAH Homes is very excited to get started on this project. It's about the fifth or sixth revision of this map that we've gotten to, to get it to in front of you today. And I think each, frankly, each revision got better, and I think we now have probably the best map in front of you. Sometimes, much to my chagrin, but I think staff ended up with a better, a better product here. And I think that's a kudos to, to your staff. If you look back at the history of this project, it goes back a very long time. So if you look, just look to the last approval of October, and here we are, already back in front of you with the tentative map, it's actually pretty quick, if you look at it in that perspective. So, and that's, that's how I'm doing it. So I, I, I think it's, it's good that we're moving forward with this, this tentative map. It has three product types in it, which I know is important. They're intermixed within this community to where you'll have various lot sizes, various product sizes. We'll have three different model complexes with three or four different elevations per model. So there'll be, I know Ms. Councilmember Budge will be happy to hear this, we'll have 36 different housing variations within this community, which is something that's very important to, to her and probably to all of you. I think it's important to, for the council to know that this is completely consistent with the specific plan. If you notice, there were no, no, no issues at all with consistency. And that also goes with the design guidelines. There are many, many connections to, to trails and parks and open space. We went out of our way working with staff to add paseos and add connections at the few cul-de-sacs there are. And so there's a lot of different ways to get to these bike trails. This is the very, very beginning. There was one slide that was, I think, pretty telling, where it showed the overall project and where this one fits. And it's at that very, very northwest corner, which does give it, there you go. It gives a pretty good sense of how big Rio del Oro is, and that this process, this project in front of you today is just the beginning. It's the, the very northwest corner, not very far from Costco. This is the, those of you that have been out there, and several of you have, this is the, kind of the, the native land that still never was the, kind of the native land that still never was really disturbed, and it's really an area that we can get onto fairly easy. So it's our anticipation that we will get out there next year and get started on construction. And I will answer any questions you have. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval, and I urge your support tonight.
Thank you. So with that, do we have any questions for the applicant, council?
I just, I'm glad that you said something about starting it next year. I was going to ask when you're going to start.
There's your answer.
Any other questions? I have one. Is there any other? Not that this is a deal breaker or anything, but what is the timeframe for international going out there? Because it's not in this plan.
Those are Garrett's children will be working on that one.
Just trying to get an idea. I mean, because it's not on this southern end of...
Elizabeth Sparkman could answer that question.
I mean, it's fine. I mean, we're coming in from White Rock. We've been working on a lot of grants and other things like that, I know, for White Rock.
Elizabeth can go through that with you, Mary Terry. But the big issue is not the street through our project, it's the street heading west. And she can explain that.
Exactly. It's going to be a long ways off before we need international to punch all the way through. So it's not in the foreseeable future. It's not going to happen in 10 years. You're talking about, so international through the project may happen sooner, but Price is right. International heading west to Sunrise is a very complex and expensive project.
Buildings in the way right now.
Yes.
Correct. That's, okay.
Quite a few.
Okay. Now remembering where that ends right now. Yeah, okay.
Through the project may happen sooner, west of the project. Right?
And there's no point in building it if it's not going anywhere.
Right.
Yeah, got it. Okay. That answered my question. I hadn't even thought about it until somebody, until you said that's not in here. I'm like, oh, why? But yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you.
I know that International Drive Bridge was built for the future, and that's why it's so wide. And people will get to the Sunrise Boulevard and look across the street, and there's a very narrow road, and they say, yeah, but that's not the future. What you're going to do is, this is not going to have to be touched on the west side.
That's correct.
So...
So is the plan to put a bridge over all that, or we're going to domaining stuff? That's what we're going to have to work out, right? Yeah, got it. Okay. That is really complicated. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I don't have questions, but I do have some comments and some requests. And actually, right now, you can take the future alignment of international and get to claim stake easily. Then you'll have to figure out what to do beyond that. I had a chance to talk to the applicant this morning, and some of the things that Price is right, I'm really very pleased about. We have such a variety of lot sizes, and because they are more, oh, mixed up, for lack of a better, for lack of a more technical term, than our neighborhood is, we really come closer to a mixed-income neighborhood than we have in the villages. But otherwise, this is a really classic Elliott project, and it's going to be just as handsome as everything else that we've experienced around here between the land plan and the design guidelines. What I have talked with him about, we still need somebody to build duplexes on corners in Rancho Cordova. It's a wonderful way to wrap a corner and not have big fences as potential billboards, as well as to create additional mixed income in the neighborhoods. We have such a problem with mail, with the location of the group mailboxes, and they are such targets for theft around here. And so I have asked, when they work on their improvement plans, could they try to work with you all to ensure that they're always under a streetlight so that, well, at least, or that there's a streetlight there? We have a lot of locations in our neighborhood where there are no streetlights right there. They may be at the corner, but the area around the mailbox is really, really dark. Price assures me that the medians on White Rock and on Rancho Cordova Parkway are 16 feet wide, which is wider than we have on Sunrise. The landscaping on Sunrise is so inadequate. The medians are too small, and the landscape corridors along the side, on that east side adjacent to the houses, they have such a dramatic slope on them, you have to wonder that nobody falls off their bicycle on trying to ride the pathways, which is probably why you never see anybody on a bicycle out there anyway. They're going to clarify elevations at the village entries. One of the things I noticed about this particular green belt is that unlike what we have in Stone Creek, these are pretty straight, and they don't meander very much, but they're also, they've got some issues with regional sand in the future.
Correct. We have a regional sand pipeline, ultimate pipeline will be going down through there as well as there is a drainage swale or drainage area that we have to take care of, too. But we're going to, but I promise that I will meander it every bit as much as we can.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Cyrus, I asked him if we could have some input into the tree selection. We have such, we have a significant problem with people taking out their trees, and your landscape architects goes to such a lot of thought to ensure that each street had a different tree theme, and then people go around and rip them out. And so we've talked an awful lot about what would be a more family-friendly tree, or even a tree that grew something, other than millions of little oak trees, which is a lovely thing, but not in the front yard. I love the fact that the park is a turnkey park, and that the landscaping, he clarified that the landscaping in the green belt areas are actually going to be more of the natural look, so that, and not turf. Everybody from Vince will be tickle pink to know that all the homes have room for the trash cans behind the fence.
Yep.
And he didn't realize it, no, Price didn't realize that we actually have a sister city in Costa Rica, but all of the street names are named for rivers in Costa Rica. So...
That's correct.
So I just, I wanted to put those couple of things on the, just on the record, so that they could work with you all on the improvement plans to make sure there's lights over mailboxes, and that we have some input into the tree selection.
Will do.
You said something about sidewalks that reminded me of something, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the visual of what the sidewalks look like, or if that's even part of this, but...
Yeah, it's page two.
Page two, I think.
Two of...
I have it on this thing, so it doesn't put them in that same order. But just one thing that hopefully we didn't do is in Anatolia, along Douglas and along Sunrise, you have those sidewalks that make about a million turns like this, to where joggers and everybody else choose to go run on the street, because...
I do not believe we've done that.
No. No, it's not, it's not like...
See, my public works director nodding his head, we're good? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because again, pushing strollers and stuff like that.
Absolutely.
People run out, literally run out in the street in our, in my neighborhood to avoid just that. So they'll run on, like, the outside of cars even, so that they can have a straight path to something like that. So, yeah. As nice as that looks driving by, it's also one of the reasons you never see anybody, but maybe some people walking, doing it.
Right. It's also one of the advantages of the street pattern that they have chosen. In our neighborhood, which was approved under the county, we have some huge sweeping boulevards that do nothing but promote speed on those boulevards. And here, it really, it's really more of a lot-and-block kind of thing. They're like only two cul-de-sacs.
That's correct.
So this will be much better.
Yeah. The other thing, again, thank you if you, is there any other questions? Okay. But Linda, you did bring up something interesting that we might want to explore more, is putting duplexes on corners. I know I'm dealing with a development in Espardo right now, that they're actually, they're actually rezoning them single-family so that we can put houses on them, because it's so difficult to finance duplexes these days. But we might want to explore that, or figuring out how the city can assist developers in producing things that have that look and feel, but they, I can tell you that from a financing standpoint, they're pretty much a nightmare.
I understand. Price indicated that Elliott has put them in Roseville. So, you know, again, this is something we could work on for the future.
Yeah. No, I would be really interested. I mean, there's some very attractive models I've seen to do that, but yeah, from the home lending standpoint, there might be something that maybe we work with Cala Chefe or somebody else that can figure out. Because it's another way to take a single-family neighborhood and put some affordable product in it, too, that still is as attractive as everything else that's there, without concentrating those houses over there, and these are the other ones over there. So no, I think it's a great idea. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do you have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
So I am happy to move that we adopt Resolution Number 90-2017, acknowledging that the environmental document is adequate and appropriate, and move approval of the tentative subdivision map for parcel 67, project number DD 8571 of Rio del Oro.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second.
Drey!
Roll call, please. I feel real good about that second.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations.
For people who don't realize it, let's remind everybody...
About a decade in the making?
On the picture that was just on the screen, you can put all of downtown Sacramento between the two freeways and the two rivers into Rio del Oro. That's the magnitude of what we're dealing with here. It's really quite remarkable. So, thank you, guys.
Getting started. Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item 12.2, La Quinta Facade Renovations, Major Design Review, project number DD 9695, located at 11131 Folsom Boulevard. I think I talked to the applicants earlier today, and I said we'd be in here about 6:30, so we're a little bit late, but I think we're still doing pretty good.
We're doing good.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, Vice Mayor Budge, and council members. Nick Sosa, Assistant Planner for the City of Rancho Cordova. The project I bring before you tonight is the La Quinta Facade Renovations, Major Design Review, project number DD 9695. The project site is located on the corner of Sunrise Boulevard and Folsom Boulevard. It neighbors the Brookfield Restaurant and the American Tire Company. The applicant is requesting a major design review for the renovations of the existing five-story La Quinta Inn and Suites located at 11131 Folsom Boulevard. Improvements include new paint, new tile materials on the main entrance, a new entry canopy, and the demolition and reconstruction of the existing breakfast dining area. Shown here is the existing facade. The existing facade contains variations of yellows with cabinet signs and the existing breakfast dining area. Here is a rendering of the new proposed facade, which includes iron corten tile to enhance the main entrance, new modernized gray and dark gray color schemes, an updated entry canopy with white metal cladding, and a new open-view breakfast dining area in replacement of the previous dining area. Shown here are the existing conditions of the rear and side facades. Again, you have your, the variations of the yellow paint with cabinet signs and a lack of landscaping in that location. This is the proposed rear and side elevations. The yellow variations have switched to gray scheme. There's upgraded awnings on both the rear and side entrances. Existing cabinet signs will be changed to channel letters with a separate sign permit. And additional trees will also be added to the rear landscaping planner to soften the This is the original approved landscape plan from when the building was originally constructed in approximately 1985. Today, the landscaping appeared to be missing some of the required trees, so the applicant has agreed to replace those trees that have been missing, as well as add three additional trees along the rear facade to soften the appearance of the rear elevation. Staff recommends that city council determine the project is in compliance with the SEQA requirements and exempt pursuant to 15301 existing facilities, and adopt Resolution 942017 for the major design review for La Quinta Inn and Suites. Staff is here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant is here in the audience.
Okay. Does council have any questions? Do we have an applicant? Did you all want to make a presentation?
My name is Laura Rebby, and I work with Epstein. We are the project architect. I apologize, I lost my voice over the weekend, so we're still recovering. I'm also happy to represent La Quinta Hotels on this project. This is part of a pretty extensive renovation that the hotel is undergoing, both on guestrooms, public interiors, as well as the exterior. And I think they're really doing a wonderful job of raising the level of quality in the hotel, which will then, I think, benefit the area and the neighborhood. As you could tell from the slides that Mr. Sosa showed, we are taking what's kind of a dated yellow appearance and bringing it into a more contemporary look with the grays and that iron corten, which is a truly a stone tile that's been remanufactured. So it's going to have a lot of variety and add a lot of color and interest to the area with this nice new palette. So that's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
I think you already said any questions from council?
Just anybody else in the audience?
Do we have any, actually, let me open the public hearing. Do you have any comments?
I have no speaker cards.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Okay, then I'm happy to move again that the environmental determination is adequate and appropriate, and that we adopt Resolution Number 94-2017 for the major design review permit for La Quinta Inn and Suites, DD 9695.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, so we'll move on to item 12.3, city-sponsored project inclu, I'm sorry, yeah. City-sponsored project includes amendments to the Title 23 zoning of the municipal code to admit outdoor commercial recreation use from the office professional mixed-use zone, replace limited use permit with administrative use permit. You're not on.
Municipal code amendments. June Cowell, Senior Planner. And so tonight, we're going to look at four amendments that are proposed. Title 23 zoning ordinance to not allow outdoor commercial recreational use within the office professional mixed-use zone district. The second one is to replace limited use permit with administrative use permit throughout the zoning ordinance. A third one is for zoning ordinance and Title IV business regulation, and that's to require 1,000 feet between massage establishments. And the last one is for Title 23 limit the electronic message signs on building facades. And so to start off, the office professional mixed-use zoning district, it's intended to designate property for the development of larger office buildings and business parks with supporting retail and service uses. And this is to ensure the allowable uses within the OPMU zone district accurately reflect the intended vision for this type of land use. And so Table 23.313-1 includes modifications to the outdoor commercial recreational use. Proposed modification, the following use would change from permitted, allowed, to not allowed. So up here is just the OPMU zone district locations in purple. And we had two zoning code amendments. And we had two zoning code amendments approved in 2017. The first one, we went over the OPMU uses incompatible with the zoning code amendments, so a few of the uses were taken out. And then, the proposed amendment, or actually, the zoning code amendments, and that was the comprehensive one that we just approved in May. So, this one is just for the outdoor commercial recreation use to be taken out of the OPMU zoning district. We had a proposal, a project, going on at that time, and so, we left it in the zoning So, we'd just be going from permitted to not allowed. The second item or amendment is to replace limited use permit with administrative use permit throughout the zoning ordinance, and this is just a cleanup item. We had a supplemental information section that was taken out, and it was brought back in late, and we noticed that it did not take out all the LUPs, so this is just to correct The third one is for the massage use. It's allowed in the commercial mixed-use zone district, and it's allowed with approval of the conditional use permit within the heavy industrial, that's M2 zoning district. The Folsom Boulevard specific plan and convention overlay district, they don't allow massage use within the CMU zoning district. So, there are six CMU locations within the city that would allow massage use by right, which has resulted in an over-concentration of the use, and that's had brought some negative impacts, including traffic and parking issues. So, in order to provide less concentration of one use in a few areas, a distance requirement for the massage establishments is 1,000 feet, and that's provided for the CMU and M2 zoning district. So, this shows the six areas of the CMU zoning district that do allow massage establishments. And then, again, the M2 in the dark gray, that would be approved with a conditional use permit. The third one is electronic message signs on building facades. So, we're proposing amendment prohibiting electronic messaging signs on building facades. Currently, the sign ordinance within approved administrative use permit allows the electronic message signs on building facades and freestanding signs. So, freestanding signs would be fine. We're just, staff is recommending that not be allowed on the building facades. We looked at adjacent jurisdictions, the City of Folsom and City of Elk Grove, and both jurisdictions have restrictions to their code or through unified development sign programs. So, Folsom considers if the message turns or is changeable more than twice in 24 hours, it can only stay up for one message for 24 hours. If it's more than that, they consider that an animated sign, and their animated signs are prohibited. The other thing that the City of Folsom, because I used to work there, we had a lot of uniformed sign programs, and the City of Rancho Cordova doesn't have as many uniformed sign programs where mostly that would prohibit the electronic messaging signs on the building. So, it would still be allowed on the freestanding signs, as we have some throughout the city, the Walgreens monument sign has electronic message. That would still be allowed. So, in order to prevent electronic message signs on building facades and to create a more unified approach to signs throughout the city, which maintains high aesthetic standards, staff is proposing the electronic message signs be prohibited from building facades. And they would still be allowed within the window displays. But what this, we had a business that came to the counter asking to have electronic freestanding sign on the building, and that's when we went through the code and said, oh, yeah, you could actually have that, although this particular business owner had a lot of signs that were over and beyond what he was allowed. So, he left. But here we are proposing it, because they did not have a uniformed sign program where the business was located.
Mr. Mayor, may I supplement staff's report briefly?
Sure.
So, as the planning department's presentation indicates, all three of these items came to the city and are being proposed and recommended by staff because of particular facts or circumstances that led them to be concerns to us, and those concerns are timely and present for different reasons that they talked about. Nevertheless, the topics are potentially severable. I think that if the council were to find that you're in full agreement on one or two of the topics, but not on a third, we could work with you tonight to potentially help you move forward on those items that you're in agreement on while bringing back to you at a future date items that were not. We received questions on one of the topics from a council member who might discuss them here tonight, and we'd be happy to work with you if there were pieces that needed more work than others. The second comment I would offer is just with respect to the massage issue in particular, over-concentration can be associated with decreased compliance with the city's ordinances on massage, and also, potentially, with increases in criminal activity. We do support, and generally, PD and law enforcement will support avoiding the over-concentration of massage, particularly where there are businesses that are not in full compliance or we're still working towards achieving full compliance. So, we do, in particular, support that portion of the ordinance that's before you. You'll recall that the issue having to do with recreation was in part the result of comments that were in particular made at a hearing that suggested the timeliness and importance of that change. So, I do appreciate staff coming back with these items and hope that you'll find your way to approve all of them, but we're happy to work with you to break them up if we need to.
Any questions for staff?
So, I'm the council member that started talking about the electronic signs. It's not clear. It needs to go back and kind of be worded out specifically, because I know people that are just going to walk around. The way the electronic signs is written, so it says no electronic signs. So, does that mean a sign that has electronic barcodes that switch? Are you saying that you're only going to allow electronic marquees that are basically going to be up on the wall, and as long as you leave it for 24 hours and then it shifts? You need to be very specific about what you're getting, because then people are going to find ways around it. So, I just want to make sure we take the time to actually write this out and think about it as signs and, you know, does this mean that a projector on the side of a building is technically a sign? Does that mean that we don't allow that? You know, we have to be careful when we use just the broad word electronic, because we're attracting those types of businesses. So, I just want to be very clear when we set this type of thing. You don't want to stifle creativity, but you also don't want it to be tacky. So, if they could take that back and kind of spend the time to really think about it and flesh it all the way out.
Any feedback from the city attorney or staff on the councilmember's comment?
I personally have no objection to the comment at all. Planning, we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to look at it and possibly beef up or add to the, in particular, I think it would really be just the single definition of that term that's proposed in the code. We'd be happy to work with Councilmember Gatewood, or if there are other members of the business community that would appreciate additional clarification there.
Yeah, I recall, I think one of my first years here was the 50th anniversary of the chamber. I think I gave like 200 bucks so that they could have their logo projected on the side of the Marriott.
Well-
Is that not going to be allowed?
And I'd like to speak to the electronic thing, too.
Go ahead.
Because I, the electronic message on the side of the Marriott was always illegal under the county's zoning code, and I thought it was adorable. I mean, I thought it was really clever and-
They do it all the time. It's great.
Yeah, and a great, you know, it's like projecting artwork on the side of the building, and I truly appreciate that. So, I'm in agreement. I wouldn't want to be so restrictive that we eliminate creativity, but if we, number one, if we look at the definition on page four of seven, we've got a proposed ordinance here that eliminates the ability to have an electronic message sign as a wall sign, but then, the sign definition itself was not updated, because it says an electronic message sign could be used as a message delivery method for a wall sign. So, that's a contradiction within the ordinance, within the way that we're proposing this. On page three of seven, item two, says if, I assume it says if they are permitted, it's limited to 32 square feet per site. And then, but then down at number six, which is time and temperature signs, it says the sign should have a maximum area of 36 square feet. So, it doesn't seem that there's any need to be different in one location or another. Let's just figure out what it's supposed to be and be that. And reading this at this point, standards for electronic message signs, I assume that this whole section deals with freestanding electric signs, because we're, because we're, the intent of this is to take out the wall signs, but it isn't clear. So, I do agree that we probably need a little massage, no pun intended.
Signs need massaging.
Our signs need massaging. That was really bad, sorry. You think Ken Cooley, we're still here.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have a public comment on this?
I have one speaker card from Diane Rogers.
Our illustrious executive CEO of our chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Diane Rogers and the President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. I would like to respectfully request that we perhaps separate out item number one in that list, as well as number four, the facade signs, and as well as the sports recreation facilities. I think that we may be jumping the gun a little bit here. There's a lot of effort and opportunity for us to build sporting facilities that bring in revenue, that bring in drive-in hotel room nights, and I'm not sure perhaps what the motivation is. And I don't, I confess, I don't have a great deal of knowledge about this one. I just saw it up on the screen, so it does concern me that we're acting too quickly on that particular issue. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to staff and perhaps talk to Rancho Cordova Travel and Tourism to see if they would feel the same way about that particular issue.
Thank you. So, I'll speak to number four, at least, and that, I think that's addressing a specific concern of a specific parcel is where this is really, is the catalyst of this discussion. I'd be comfortable for now adopting it and seeing if we need to update the definitions in the future.
You mean for the electronic signs?
No, the outdoor recreation.
Oh, that's number one.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, you said number four.
I did, I'm sorry. You're right. So, number one, I would be comfortable moving that one forward, I think, for now, because it's dealing with some specific parcels that I think we're concerned getting zoned or uses that we'd like to make sure are preserved for commercial for very specific reasons. Some very large opportunities within this region that we want to keep for office and commercial use, but I think we could work with the Chamber and Travel and Tourism and some other folks to flesh out a definition that I think would work in general. But I think preserving that commercial space to stay commercial, I think, is a high priority for this council and this city.
And I do agree with you, but it's not for commercial. It's because we-
Office space.
Yeah, it's really critical that we retain our office industrial spaces. We've already, we've already had to approve a proposal for a use within an enormous industrial building that, within two weeks, just as we were afraid could have been used for something for which it was originally intended. And I'm with Donald. I would prefer to go ahead and adopt this, and then, if we get other information that there's, that there's an opportunity that's being missed, then we should revisit it, but...
Sorry, did you have something?
Just a quick clarification, that this restriction is specifically for the office professional use.
Yeah.
That's the business park, so it doesn't apply to commercial or industrial. So, that is a very limited part of the city, not the entire commercial zone. So, it doesn't affect the area, the industrial areas east of Sunrise or many other commercial parcels in the city.
And I would add, I believe, in prior conversations, economic development isn't at the podium, but this change would preserve the jobs-producing core of the undeveloped portions of the community.
Yeah, I think, Diane, and we can talk more offline if you'd like, but I think you'll be fine with this, and I think, long-term, we can have some additional discussions if we need to address a concern or missing of an opportunity, like Linda said, and this is a very tight area that we're talking about.
I appreciate that, I just-
Yep. No, I get it.
Got it.
I was just going to say, I think we need to definitely pay attention on that, because we don't want to miss any of the opportunities when you have so many businesses that are moving in this direction. I want to have the first opportunity to say, we have the place you're looking for right here, and we're not going to limit this, so they're going to say, well, I can't do that because, so I'm going to see that we're making sure it's very accurate on what we're talking about, rather than saying, well, maybe this, maybe that. No, I don't want that either.
Yep. So, with that, I'm going to just summarize. I think it sounds like we're comfortable with everything, except number four, we'd like to have come back. Does that sound right? With some additional work on the definition of electric signs or electronic signs.
It is, and Mayor, with your indulgence, I would offer to briefly just read through the draft ordinance that's in your packet and read into the record a few deletions from it that we would use. It would be terrific, from both a code enforcement perspective and a planning perspective and economic development perspective, if you're comfortable introducing the two pieces and then breaking out the reader board, electronic reader signs, and we'll bring that piece back to you as a standalone ordinance. So, if you were comfortable allowing me to read into the record the deletions, I could walk you through that, and then you'd get a corrected version of the ordinance with just those two pieces.
Three pieces.
Three pieces, excuse me. Everything except the electronic reader signs will come back to you for approval at your next council meeting.
And then, we'll have a discussion item at a later date to be determined by staff?
And I think we may, we may see if we can bring back a proposed ordinance for you that would address all the concerns we heard here tonight.
Yeah.
Would that be the August 7th City Council meeting? That's the next one? Yes.
So, Mayor, may I?
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if it's, if it is the council's intention to make a motion that would introduce the ordinance as proposed with the exception of the electronic reader signs on building facades, in order to do that, we would, we would ask that you direct us to do the following. First, we would strike the portion of the title that begins with "and enacting limitations on electronic reader signs or building facades." Second, we would strike in its entirety the fourth recital that begins, whereas amendments to the electronic message provisions. Next, in Section 2B regarding the consistency with the general plan, we would ask you to strike in its entirety the last sentence, beginning with amendment to the electronic message provisions. In that same section, subsection C, we would ask that you strike the last phrase of paragraph C, beginning with the phrase "and amendments to the electronic message provisions." Next, in Section 3 of the ordinance, we would ask you to strike the phrase, we'd ask you to add the word- ask you to add the word amended before exhibit A because the exhibit before you is now amended. We would also ask you in the next line to delete the phrase "and" section 23743.065 of the municipal code. And for reference, that is the section, that is the page of exhibit A that has the language that would make electronic message signs prohibited on building facades. Next, actually, we have, we have no further requested changes.
Actually, I have one. Oh, go ahead. Run through that business about section three because I read that 23.743.065 to be the limited use permit in the AUP.
So as I-
Read through that one again.
The-
Section three, right?
Exhibit A. Section three is the amendments to title 23.
Amended exhibit A.
And in your exhibit A, in your exhibit A, to the ordinance, is section 23743.065 standards for electronic message signs. And in red line is the additional language that electronics message signs are prohibited on building facades.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Adam.
So those changes would not be adopted.
Page, page two of three.
Page two of three of exhibit A?
Attachment one. Well, we are, because-
If you're, unfortunately, if we're trying to introduce with the amended, and if we need a break to double-check if there are any other changes with staff or council member Budge, we're certainly happy to take that quick break, Mayor. The reason again for the-
Would we like to take a quick break? I just feel like we're redlining and deleting and amending a lot all at once.
Our desire, if possible, given developments and proposals that a number of departments are having to process is that the massage, for example, is important, in our opinion, to get on the books.
No, I would totally agree. I definitely, I definitely don't want to wait till August seventh to get it.
No, call five minutes.
So we'll take five?
Yeah.
Five-minute recess. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order, and I'll ask our city attorney for some guidance on 12.3.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and community. Again, in order to implement the potential council direction that you want to introduce the ordinance as drafted in front of you, excluding all of the changes that would have to do with electronic reader signs on building facades, in addition to what I just read into the record immediately before the break, we would, I would offer one additional deletion, which is to section two, subsection C, in the middle of the paragraph, there is a sentence that begins with a phrase prohibiting electronic message signs. We would ask that you delete that sentence in its entirety. The only other modification is, I read deletion to section three into the record, and there we would ask in section three that you only delete the words "and" section 23.743.065. And again, that section is the portion of the attachment that deals with electronic message signs. So with that, we would ask that if you make the motion to introduce the ordinance as proposed without electronic reader signs, that you include in that motion the changes that I've read into the record.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion, which could be as simple as adopting the staff recommendation based on the city attorney's explanations.
Then I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye. That wasn't complicated for your first day. All right. So with that, we'll move on to regular calendar items, and we have 13.1, staff recommendation. Staff recommends council introduce ordinance six dash 2017, I'm reading the whole wrong part of it, introduction of ordinance number six dash 2017 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Ranch Cordova, adding article 16, property maintenance code to chapter 1618 nuisance code, and I'm going to stop there because there's just a whole bunch to read.
I will open the item.
Okay, city attorney, please.
Thank you very much. We are going to ask Kerry Simpson to walk through the substance of your presentation here this evening. We would note that we have worked very closely, as the council knows, with council member Sander on this item. It's something that he's shown a keen and detailed interest in throughout the process. And this afternoon, he sent us an email with a few additional requested changes that Ms. Simpson will talk about, but a couple of those changes would actually, that we can support and recommend, would actually require us to draft some additional conforming changes in other sections of the code, such as graffiti or elsewhere. And so what we would ask you to do tonight is to allow us to give the full presentation for you to discuss any issues that you have with the proposed property maintenance code, and then we'll come back, rather than trying to do any of the drafting that we just did on the prior item on the fly, we'll just come back at a future council meeting, give you all the opportunity to talk about it more and to see the changes that we would make that would conform on the other sections, and then introduce the ordinance perhaps at that next city council meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Kerry Simpson, Neighborhood Services Manager. Welcome and thank you. I want to thank you for all the hard work that everybody has done and all the input we've had from the community on the property maintenance code, and thank you, Adam. So why do we need this code? Basically, we have lots of areas, as you can see from the municipal code, that sets forth all the things related to private property, property maintenance in both commercial and residential, and they're all over the place. So when a resident wants to look and say, well, how should I maintain my property? The code is literally everywhere. And also for staff that are doing enforcement of the code, it makes it very difficult not to have kind of a one-stop shop for codes. So that's why we currently are requesting to put the property maintenance to code together, is to have them in one easy-to-find location for everybody. And as I said, that was item number one. It would be setting forth standards for both private, commercial, and residential properties. One easy reference, clear enforcement standards, and by the way, our enforcement standards are not, we're not requesting to change anything, and we'll go over that in a bit. And then the zoning code issue, as you saw earlier, you approved a lien confirmation for a few outstanding enforcement issues. We are unable to lien for zoning code issues. So for example, if someone has a beaten-up, inoperable car in their front yard, we are unable to use fines and fees as a way to try and encourage people to get rid of them. In fact, they can sit there with the car on their property and not worry that we would be able to lien them if we left them in the zoning code. So that's an additional reason we would like zoning code violations to be removed, and they'd still be in the zoning code to be referenced in the property maintenance code. So the regulation would be exactly the same. We, as we always explain, we're very much into education. We do go to a property, educate the property owner, try to provide resources if they need it, so if we have a senior that can't do something or somebody that needs additional time, we're always very open and facilitative of trying to help folks to come into compliance. We are then able to issue fines and fees. Nothing has changed. There's no additional fines and fees in this code. I think there's a misunderstanding that maybe there's these additional fines and fees that we were going to levy. And then there is an ability for a resident or a property owner to appeal any kind of The outreach we've done thus far is we had a meeting with the VINS who were very open to giving us feedback, and we appreciate that. We provided a copy to the Chamber of Commerce, and I wanted to speak to, we did get an email from Mr. Shaw, Chuck Shaw, today, and it was related to storing dumpsters in screened areas and also requiring them to have a lock on, and he had some questions about that. And one thing I wanted to say is, this is an addition. We are not adding that requirement in this code. If we go back to the first slide and how I said we're bringing together everything and kind of aggregating it in one easy-to-find location, that requirement is already in the zoning code, that garbage dumpsters have to be screened and locked. So if we in fact wanted to change that, it wouldn't be as easy as leaving it out here. It's already in our zoning code. So that will be something we'd have to definitely think about in the future if that's something we didn't want.
You're meaning the code requires that trash enclosures be locked, not the cans?
Both, both. They have, no, they have to be screened, so they have to be screened from public view, and the can, the actual trash-
Enclosure needs to be locked.
In commercial, yes. Not in residential, yes. You don't need to put one on your little car, no, but absolutely.
But like even, but dumpsters in general, they don't lock the, like, I have commercial buildings, we, the trash enclosure has a combination lock on it that the hauler knows and unlocks it and takes it out, but you're not saying put a lock on a dumpster?
Either way, it has to be secured so that we can't have people scabbing in it. And as we do cleanup of camps, we're finding a lot of scabage stuff out there. So I guess what I'm trying to just say for the record is it's already in the zoning code. It's not something that we're trying to, you know, beef up the rules and regulations related to that at this point.
The, I have a question about that. The, are we going to take into account the, I think, he actually did a presentation and talked about grandfathering in some of the buildings that on Horn Road where it's pretty much impossible to hide the dumpster because of how the layout of the building? Are you planning, are you expecting them to then build a structure to try to hide it, or how does that work?
So basically, if someone's legal nonconforming, we would be able to look at the property and say that it was there prior to the screening requirements, and then the planning department would make a determination if it was grandfathered in. So, I mean, absolutely, we can look at things individually. I think moving forward, we're looking for garbage dumpsters to be screened from public view.
Yeah, I would understand. It's more along the lines of the older stuff like the Tile Road and stuff where it's basically because we designed the buildings the way they are that there's no way to actually hide the stuff.
Absolutely. And anytime some things constructed in a certain manner that the rule wasn't there when it was constructed, then the planning department could make a determination it was legal nonconforming.
Okay.
Thank you. So also, city council workshop on April 25th, we got a lot of feedback at that time, and so we've incorporated those items in this current iteration. So clarifications of the things that we've added subsequent to our workshop, there was not a specified grass limit, and we were asked to do eight inches, and we thought that was appropriate related to what other people regionally have. So grass length in residential and commercial shouldn't exceed eight inches. There's a five-foot separation from the edge of the driveway to the property line, and what this is for is to make sure that folks are not having like a sea of cement. We don't have property to property to property in a residential neighborhood just being one big sea of cement. We have a clarification of the appropriate materials for fence, and that would be cedar, redwood, pine, Douglas fir, vinyl, and raw iron. We've been having some folks out there that have been coming up with some different ways of doing it, like cutting down a tree, then just cutting the tree into pieces and laying around the edge of their property and calling it a fence. So we called out exact type of fence material that we would like to see. Verbiage to distinguish for lighting, and this was actually Vice Mayor Budge had mentioned that some folks like to leave lighting up all year round, and it's decorative lighting versus holiday lighting. And so it calls out the difference between, you know, temporary lighting and the type of lighting that would be put up for a particular holiday. There's a section that we're going to be altering, so it makes sure that painting out graffiti makes it consistent with the building. We don't want to see buildings where it almost, you know, looks like it's been patchworked. We're saying if you have a blue building, please paint your graffiti out in blue. Don't put yellow paint on, and, you know, just to make it consistent with the rest of the construction of the building. A section that prohibits the presence of the packing boxes, cardboard boxes, lumber, rubbish, refuge barrels, drums, salvage materials, or other debris on residential properties. Requires business owners to remove trash from site regularly and remove trash in the immediate vicinity of the building, so meaning if there's trash that's come from your property and it's in a big pile over the sidewalk, we're asking them to make sure that they clean it up. Expands the language to make sure that we can keep parking lots and building entrances free of gum and spilled liquids. And then when people are doing their parking lots, we are asking them to use the ASTM standards. We found that when people are redoing parking lots, they're just using residential paint, and within a couple of months, you can't see where the handicap parking is or any of the other parking is. So we are just asking to clarify that. So I'm going to jump over this. We're actually not recommending to do this. We're recommending to have some questions, and then we would recommend that we move it to next, to hearing at the next city council meeting when Councilmember Sander could be here, and we can make those changes. And I can go over what those changes are that he's requesting just real briefly. The first one is that if a building has been painted numerous times due to graffiti and you're unable to make it look consistent, that they would repaint the wall, would be one of them. The second one is for apartment buildings, when they have locks on gates that go out into the, to the public area, if the locks are there, Councilmember Sander is asking that they maintain those locks in a workable manner, because what's happening is they're just removing locks or they're allowing them to be broken, and it makes it very difficult for the tenants that either, you know, think they're going to be safe and they're not, or can't get in because the lock's broken.
Can we require RT to do that, too? Can we require RT to do that, too, at light rail crossings?
I don't-
Be nice.
It would be nice. It would be nice. I don't know. I could defer to-
We can give it some thought. We may not be able to because of the independent agency.
We can prohibit smoking in parks, can't we?
We'll be happy to take a look at it.
Okay.
It'd be including Southern Pacific and-
I'm thinking, I'm talking about the pedestrian light rail crossing locking gates that we have that half of them don't even work, that they should work to protect our public. So it's just, it's just a thought. We don't need to spend more time talking about it.
I appreciate that. And then just in sections 16181703F and 16181704F, and adding the words, which would be easy to do, broken or discarded furniture, household fixtures, equipment or furnishings, garbage receptacles, or shopping or laundry carts, adding that to things that you can't allow to, you know, accumulate in your front yard. So those things would be an easy fix. The other two, we would be requesting to come back and have done maybe in two weeks.
And I think the only comment we might offer is, in some cases, the distinction between indoor and outdoor furniture can be a relatively subtle one.
That was what I was going to wonder, is does this mean you can't have a rocking chair in your front yard, or on your porch or something?
No, pretty much if it's sold to be outdoor furniture, it's really-
You're trying to avoid couches to be in the front yard.
Couches, couches in the front yard, yes. And so I would just like to reiterate, those are all changes we may pursue into the comments that we heard at the council workshop on the 25th of April. Thank you. So I entertain any questions at this time.
So, no, this isn't a public hearing. Any questions for staff?
I have a question, Kerry. Run back to the appropriate fencing materials.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned vinyl. In what applications do you expect somebody to use vinyl?
I could tell you. Those CorePlast vinyl fencing that you can buy pre-made, the white ones, the thick plastic ones.
Is that what you mean?
I think that's what we're referring to, yes.
Okay, because we took vinyl slats out of chain link.
Absolutely, no chain link at all, and no chain link with vinyl slats. The fence actually looks like wood, but it's white vinyl.
Washable, you can put it in, yeah.
For sure. Okay, got it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's actually an upgrade to most of the fencing material.
I would just add that, that some of the prevailing typical white picket fence is now vinyl.
Correct. I completely agree.
And it's more expensive than wood a lot of times.
It is. It is.
Any other questions for staff? So we have a, well, we have a request from Councilmember Sander to move this to the next meeting.
Okay, but you might ask if anybody else came to speak to the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, and we do have a public comment.
I do.
I have one speaker card from Angel Ball.
Here's Ball.
Good evening. My name is Angel Ball, and I'm here for two comments. My first comment is to thank Kerry Simpson and Ryan Taylor for having the meeting with the volunteers in Neighborhood Service. As you know, it's very important how our community looks and what we can do to make it look better and better every day. My second comment is basically just about dumpsters. I do believe that they should be out of sight, and they should be locked so that people can't get in them and collect some of the items that Kerry was referring to. And I'm talking about commercial dumpsters, not trash carts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, so we have requests from staff to move this to the August 7 meeting. How does council feel about that? We could adopt, or we could wait?
That's fine. Far as I'm concerned, we can do that so we can get things clarified. I'd rather do that.
David wants to be here for this, so let's move it.
Yeah. So I will move that we continue item 13.1 to August the whatever?
7.
7. Okay.
So have a motion?
Yeah.
I'd like to motion. Do we move it?
And so I have a second?
Okay, then I'll second it.
Yes! Oh, you've already motioned it? Okay.
Don't worry about it.
Kate Wood, seconded by Budge. Our city manager had some comments.
I just had a comment for the council in case if you have any comments or recommendations or suggestions related to the proposed ordinance. I think it would be good for staff to hear those. So if we need to do some work prior to the August 6 formal hearing, it would be a good, you know, it would give us some time to work on those issues. So that would be my only request.
Is there any other feedback for staff?
You might need it longer than just that one, two weeks between?
Oh, it's a whole month. It's a month and a half.
August 7.
It's over a month and a half.
Sorry, I'm just thinking July is still there.
No meetings in July, yep.
Yeah, because since we've put a lot of work into this, and staff has done a really good job in putting all the information together, it would be good if we know there are any other outstanding issues that either we need to address or haven't been addressed that we need to work on.
Okay. So did you read, those were the additional ones that David was requesting, correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
The three that I read were the, excuse me, the fences at commercial apartment complexes, the graffiti paintout, and then the addition to certain items in accumulation. Those three are the ones that...
Okay. So those aren't reflected in what's in front of us, so I guess I'll just throw it out there. Is there any customer that's opposed to that, or should staff incorporate those into the draft that we're going to be reviewing in August?
Oh, for sure.
And again, just for full disclosure, one of the reasons why we need to bring the item back is that the change on graffiti would actually require us to change another section of the code that where your actual city policy so far has been to do less than this is. So there's, we would be doing more in our own graffiti program than we currently are doing as a result of this change. So in some ways, it's nice for the community to know that we are sharing in the additional responsibilities that we're asking them to take on as well.
Okay. Are we good? Okay, do we need a roll call?
Yes, please.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to item 14, council request for future agenda items. Do we have any?
I have a couple things, if that's okay. Since I have a lot to learn, there's a couple items I would like. If I can get a presentation from the Development Services of Ranch Cove to do the impact on the fee program and length of the entitlement process. And then I would like a, because I'm more the techie, I'd like to request an update from the Economic Development Department on current efforts in the city to attract and retain technology, industry, and companies.
Okay. So this is just my interpretation. Both of those would probably be individual presentations to you, and then we could discuss if there was a need to have an additional public workshop on those subjects.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, we have been engaged in some discussions with BIA, and there are some issues specifically related to some financing mechanisms for new development that require, that may require some policy input from the council. So we had hoped and we had expected to be able to bring something to the city council, a policy-level discussion sometimes in the fall. So this may be the item, the first item that Councilmember Gatewood suggested could fit in that discussion, and we could talk about that at that. And we're thinking that it would be a work session, not a formal council meeting. That would be probably the time to address that issue.
Would that come before the Subcommittee for the BIA, before that workshop? Or maybe we should discuss that separately?
We could discuss it separately. I think at this point, nothing has really matured enough for it to warrant a council decision, but I think it does require some council input.
Because there is a Subcommittee of the council that meets on an as-needs basis with the BIA and development staff. But staff should probably get you caught up as to what's gone on since the last time we've looked at fees and phasing. Okay. So with that, I just want to recognize that we have a lot of people that come and stay for a lot of our meetings, but very rarely do we have somebody from a different jurisdiction come and sit in our audience. And so I wanted to recognize Maurice Johnson, our Assistant Fire Chief and our Fire Marshal, for sticking it out the whole night. So very rarely do we see that. So welcome to our city, and thanks for being here. And so with that, we will stand adjourned.